And welcome to the Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. A meeting was held at 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers of City Hall for clarification of the agenda. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the Chair. And she'll give his or her name for the record. If the citizen wishes to read any documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the Chair. There is a three-minute time limitation for public testimony for the commission. Aislinn, will you please call roll?
Here.
Mr. Ochanda?
Here.
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 Thank you. The commission may wish to, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two. A mission, commission may wish to approve the minutes from the clarification and regular meetings held on February 22nd, 2023. Is there any discussion from the commission on those meeting minutes? With no further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from the February 22nd, 23, 23, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion by Hila and a second by Rue. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Hila?
Yes.
Rue?
Yes.
Bar Two?
Yep.
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Three. This is a public hearing for a zone map amendment filed 23-33. This time has been set aside for the P&amp;Z to hear comments from the public regarding the zone map amendment and application requested by Brandon Ratliff of Land Quest Development, LLC rezoning 3.5 acres more or less of the subject parent parcel encompassing 15.69 acres more or less from residential medium density to multifamily to residential medium density multifamily to residential high density. I would like to, we forgot to do this, that role disclosed that I made a site visit. Is there anything else that needs to be?
I made a site visit as well.
Fry, did you say you made a site visit as well?
I made it so, yes.
Fry, Rue, and Chanda made site visits for that agenda item.
I did also.
And Bar Two, thank you. So for the public hearing, the application, the application presentation is limited to 10 minutes. There is a three-minute time limit on public testimony. Those presenting or testifying will state their name for the record. While giving testimony, questions and comments should be pertinent to the application and should be addressed only by the commission. During the public hearing, there should be no questions, comments, or applause from the audience. Should the meeting go later than 8:00 PM, the commission may take a scheduled 10-minute break. Commission members may, must make their decision regarding the application on facts already in the record and information presented during the hearing counts, during the public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open, and I would invite the applicant to come forward.
Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you for having me. My name is Sean O'Brien with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. You can find us at 600 East Oak Street. I'm representing Brandon Ratliff and Land Quest Development for this zone change request. So we recently annexed this land, and now we're determining what, what our best use is for it. Brandon Ratliff is very involved in, in this process and has put together a very, a very well-put-together narrative for the zone change request. We're simply looking for opportunities to expand our, to, we're look, we're trying to create creative opportunities for using this land and making sure it's marketable in the market that we have today. We'd like to integrate a variety of residential uses in this area, and we have already kind of begun that process with the annexation and the current subdivisions that we've been doing in this area known as Western Skies Division One and Division Two. Both of those projects are quite unique in that they have a kind of a higher density, but still a standard typical subdivision, sort of. Instead of having one lot on each side of the road, we developed those projects with two lots on each side of the road, which helps to utilize the, the infrastructure that we can gather better and provide better prices of the land for sale when those are sold to the homeowners and the new developers. Brandon has looked at doing PUDs, but has determined it would be in his best interest in order to obtain flexibility to just go ahead and request the zone change from RMM to RH. We are looking at about 3.58 acres. Subject property is situated kind of along the interchange from Interstate 86 to Interstate I-15. The land is going to be served adequately by public facilities as the development continues northerly into this area, and we actually have an opportunity to expand from the Dollstone Drive and Jasmine Street easterly into this area as well. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Commission, any questions for the applicant? No, doesn't look like we have any. You will have a chance for a rebuttal.
Awesome, thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite staff to come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission Members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the City. As noted, Mr. Brandon Ratliff of Land Quest LLC represented by Sean O'Brien of RMES has submitted a zoning map amendment application requesting to rezone 3.58 acres more or less of a parent parcel encompassing 15.69 acres more or less from residential medium density multifamily RMM to residential high-density RH. The primary difference between the two districts equates to the maximum number of dwelling units per acre. Specifically, RMM allows up to 12 units per acre versus RH, which is 30 units per acre. The same land uses as far as residential are permitted. The parcel again is located east of Dollstone Drive and west and adjacent to Interstate 86 Southern Mergent Ramp with I-15. Parcel has an average slope of three to 5% and is therefore not subject to slope development standards. The site is physically suitable for residential development under RH zoning. The minimum lot size for a single-family home is 4,200 square feet. Duplexes require a minimum lot area of 62 or 6720, and multifamily townhomes in the RH is 3630. There are three possible access points to the property, all from Highline Road, a designated minor arterial, and a site in East Point Drives via Dollstone and El Rancho. As a general note, Public Works will require submittal of a traffic study as part of the next preliminary plat. Water and sewer is readily available with the extension as needed. Notice was published in the Idaho State Journal. A sign was posted on the subject property on February 21st of 2023. All property owners within 300-foot radius of the external boundaries of the land being considered have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment. No written comment from the public has been received. A utility notice was provided to the appropriate entities via email on January 25th of 2023. In conclusion of the application, staff concludes the in-consideration act application. Staff concludes that the proposed zoning map amendment is compliant with Pocatello Code Section 1702.170. Should the commission recommend approval of the subject application, there are conditions outlined in the staff report, and that concludes my presentation.
Commission, any questions for staff?
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, we are going to now open it up for public testimony. When you, I would like to remind each person that when you come to the podium, you must state your name. Please remember to only address the commission, not the audience, the applicant, or the representative. You have three minutes to testify and will be asked to stop when time runs out. Keep questions and comments pertinent to the application, and do not duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered from previous testimony heard today. At this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony in support of the application to come forward.
Brandon Ratliff, Land Quest Development. I just want to add a couple things that RMES told you. So one of the reasons why I'm looking to kind of mix up the densities, like you said, to have a variety of uses that I can bring to the market. I own ground on the, on the benches, and I've been looking into doing that stuff, and I'm running into a lot more issues on the benches to try to provide affordable, affordable housing. And I look at this parcel, it's center of town, it's close to shopping, close to employment, it's flat, it's buildable, so I think it's in our best interest to try to utilize these parcels to have a little bit more of a density going on to give us a better variety of what I can put in there and market. And as far as the density goes, like if you look at the overall, the parcel, it was 60, 70 acres. I started with a flag lot, kind of a, you know, double, double lots with the main road and flag lot, and that kind of took up a lot, a lot more property than kind of a, in consideration of a normal, single road, do lots, come in, do lots, road, lot, road. And so usually, yeah, usually you're trying to make your wits as minimal as possible to save on affordability of a lot, you know, wider lots, more money, narrower lots are less money. So, so when I started laying that out, you know, I liked the idea, it helps for infrastructure, like on two phases, we'll eliminate two city roads that won't be, need to be maintained. And so I think it was a win-win for the city, a win-win for, for me to be able to market lots that are affordable, especially at this time and age, like I was able to double up the lots, and I've got some, some room in my margins that I can actually bring the price down and still actually make some money and bring it to where the market will bear it in the times we're at. So that was a kind of a hidden benefit of putting it in that way. So it's gave me a lot of flexibility to keep me kind of in the game, keep, try to sell lots, because it has been slow, you know, I haven't been selling a whole lot of single-family lots, and, and so hopefully that'll change, but I feel like I can be aggressive and do that. Like getting off the point there, so as, as I came along, and then I realized, well, I wanted to kind of change, I wanted to go back to the conventional, a little bit more density, more affordability, because these lots were bigger that I'm putting in, because I had to adjust for the private drive and stuff like that, so the price range was kind of up there, a little bit bigger, more area. I want to scale, I wanted to scale back, so that's kind of when I started thinking of just as I go to the freeway, start to scale down a little bit, get back to the starter lot that I could market, something a little bit less narrow, more affordable, and then take it to the interstate, interstate, have the natural buffer there, and then, yeah, originally I had townhouses in the RMM. Started laying it all out to, yeah.
Time.
The PUD wasn't gonna, I'm gonna do the same density that I was gonna do in a PUD, but the PUD locks me into a certain layout, so the rezone will just give me more flexibility to adjust.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Anybody else in support? Anyone uncommitted that would like to provide testimony? Anybody opposing the application? Would you, would the applicant like to rebuttal?
I think we're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With no further testimony and no further rebuttal, I would like to declare the public hearing closed. At this time, is there any discussion or a motion?
Let me see, I, I like mixing up the density, so I'm, I think it's good for the city, I think it's good, it aligns with what we're looking at with the comprehensive plan and the changes we want to make there, so I, I think it's good. And especially bumping it up next to the interstate, which, you know, is less desirable just because of noise, well, if you put apartments there in higher density, then they kind of, they kind of equal out.
I think it's great.
Do you entertain a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that, I move to recommend approval of the zone map amendment application from Brandon Ratliff of Land Quest Development LLC rezoning 3.58 acres more or less of the subject parent parcel encompassing 15.69 acres more or less from residential medium density multifamily to residential high-density, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.170 of Pocatello City Code with the conditions listed in the staff report and to authorize the Chair to sign the findings effect. It's a mouthful.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Hila and a second by Fry. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Hila?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
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 We will now be moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, and I will be recusing myself and handing the time over. Thank you.
Okay. So we will move to Agenda Item Number Four, which is a public hearing on a planned unit development filed 23-120. This time has been set aside for the planning and zoning to hear comments from the public regarding planned unit development. Application request by Kent Morris of Morris Construction, represented by Chris Street of HLE, to develop 4.69 acres more or less into 36 townhome lots, eight fourplex lots, and combination stormwater, open space, recreation areas. The proposed PUD is located east of Philbin Road and west of Brock Drive. I declare the public hearing open. I would like to invite the applicant to come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commission Members, Chris Street, HLE, 800 West Judicial, here representing Mr. Morris on his planned unit development. I do have some larger maps for you. I know you've got eight and a half by elevens, so I brought you a little larger maps, a little easier to see, so.
Thank you.
And also for anybody here, for the hearing, I placed some additional maps on the back table there if they'd like to look at. This planned unit development is at the intersection of Philbin and Brock, and with Philbin, it borders Philbin on the west. Like, like we stated, it consists of 36 townhome lots and eight fourplex lots. It's also bordered by single-family residential on the south and on the east, and then also some fourplex lots, which is, were also done by Morris Construction directly across the road on Brock Drive. The fourplex lots, the fourplexes that we're proposing are, will be basically the identical floor plan of the ones across the street. I believe you, we were provided with some plans for those. The townhome lots will have, or consist of six townhomes with zero-foot lot lines. They're a little smaller in nature. They're proposed to be marketing a newer home buyer or a, maybe some empty nesters looking to kind of downsize on their house with, where they don't have to maintain their yards. The yard's gonna be maintained by the Homeowners Association with some parking areas. They'll have a garage and also a driveway. We have some recreation areas that we've set aside. We have a nice walking path that we're proposing that kind of loops around the development along with the basketball court, and we also are, instead of, we only have one above-ground storm retainer, so that'd be between the, the fourplex lots. All the other storm drain or change will be underground and infiltrators, so it kind of hides it from, so that you don't have open swells everywhere. So I think that's all I have to add. If there's any questions, I can answer them now or try to.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
All right, thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite the staff.
Again, good evening, Commission Members. Matthew Lewis with the City. As noted in the agenda item, Kent Morris of Morris Construction, represented by Chris Street of HLE, has submitted an application for a planned unit development to develop six, 4.69 acres more or less into 36 townhome units, eight fourplex lots, and a combination of stormwater, open space, recreations, and a parking lot. The proposed PUD is located south of Philbin Drive, and actually, it would be, yeah, south of Philbin Drive and west of Brock Drive, it's a correction there. The subject property is owned RCP. The townhome portion of the project is designed as a zero-lot line development in groups of six for a total of 36 structures in all. The project is designed to integrate with adjacent residential homes by constructing townhome units adjacent to the single-family homes rather than the fourplexes, which are proposed near the center of the proposal. Additionally, the increased rear setbacks of 25 feet or more and planting of trees improves air and space between the subject development and existing subdivisions. A six-foot wide pedestrian path is proposed extending along the rear property line of the townhomes, interconnecting to the existing sidewalks on Philbin Road and Brock Drive. Common areas will be provided for parking, open space, and stormwater retention, with said areas being dedicated and maintained by the Homeowners Association. Each townhome will have a single-car drive and garage, thus the requirement providing a minimum of two off-street parking spaces will be met. Each fourplex has three bedrooms, thus under Municipal Code 1705.570, one, two, two off-street parking spaces are required per unit for a total of 62 parking spaces. The proposal shows 64. The applicant has requested a waiver as part of the PUD application. Specifically, Municipal Code requires a six-foot sideyard setback be maintained at the end units for each of the townhomes and the apartment structures abutting the stormwater retention and recreation areas. So just to give you, just to point that out for you. So that's going to be these end units here on all of these would typically require a six-foot setback, and so there has been, I think, two other instances where there's been a waiver on those, and staff would recommend approval of that. As part of that, staff recommends that the waiver to the setback requirements and protrusion beyond each individual lot be granted. As part of a preliminary plat application, the applicant shall show a two-foot easement line around the footprint of each end building to provide for awnings, eaves, overhangs, and landscaping to extend into the sheer common areas, and this is outlined in recommended condition number four. Municipal Code Section 1705.270, Transitional Landscape Buffers, requires a minimum rear setback in RCP zoning district of 10 feet as measured from property line. The proposed rear setbacks are 25 feet or greater. A six-foot-high sight obscuring fence already exists associated with the abutting subdivisions. See recommendation, staff condition number seven regarding transitional landscaper, landscaping buffering. There are two points of ingress egress to the development, both off of Brock Drive. Access from Philbin Road will not be provided. All internal circulation will be private. An internal pedestrian pathway is proposed between lots eight and nine, connecting to the sidewalk adjacent Philbin Road, and that's, that's this area here. An internal pedestrian way is also depicted between lots 20 and 21. So we got some in here. The six-foot-wide pedestrian path extends across the rear property lines of the townhomes, specifically lots 15 through 38, interconnecting to Philbin Road and Brock Drive and their sidewalks, so that's gonna be, this is the pathway, this is Brock, Philbin, there. A 10-by-396.2 parcel, Lot One, it's hard to see on, on the plat or on the, on your information, but it's being dedicated to the city for future expansion, that'll be part of plat of Philbin Road. Curved gutter and five-foot-wide sidewalk will be required adjacent both street frontages as part of future development. The project area also is, is called out in the summary of the request, states that there is 4.69 acres of land. As part of the PUD, at least 20% of the net land area involved in the development shall be left for open space. As such, a minimum of 40,859.3 square feet shall be dedicated as open space, and the applicant is proposing 42,548 square feet more or less. The minimum lot area required for the mix of land uses results in 4.06 acres, allowing for density, for the density as proposed. The total area incorporated in the PUD again is 4.69 acres. The RCP zoning district allows a maximum of 30 dwelling units per acre. Past interpretation of lot size averaging on separate applications has allowed lot size averaging to include the common area of the project into the lot size averaging calculation. Thus, the overall density does not exceed the maximum number of dwelling units per acre allowed by Municipal Code. All property owners within 300-foot radius of the existing properties have been provided notice of the public hearing. Notice was provided in Idaho State Journal. Written testimony received has been forwarded to the commission for consideration, and I believe I forwarded that to you earlier today. Utility providers and affected city departments were provided notice on February 8th of 2023. To date, no comments have been received from utility providers and affected city departments other than Public Works memo provided in the staff report. In consideration of the application and proposed development, staff concludes that the planning development request is compliant with Municipal Code Section 1702.140. Should the commission recommend approval of the condition of the subject application, staff recommends the conditions as outlined in the staff report. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Just to confirm, we're, so you confirmed that no additional written public comments were received?
I have not received any additional.
Okay, thank you. Does the commissioners have any questions for the city staff?
I have a couple, just to get my mind straight. It looks like we have two accesses, and they're both to Brock Drive.
That's correct.
And the complex across the road, they use that same.
Yes.
Their access across the road.
Yes.
Is this applicant, well, there's three, looks like three different projects on, on the move right now. Is this applicant one of?
It's the same applicant, yes.
Probably the one on, what do you call it?
Morris Construction, yeah. They're doing the, the development to the.
Yeah, right next, the corner.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's well aware of what's going on since he's already there.
Yep.
Okay, and then no access anywhere on Philbin Road, it's just a straight shot?
Yes.
Okay, that's all right.
Any further questions?
I have a question for the applicant again.
Thank you.
We'll get back to that.
No questions for the staff right now?
No, not for staff.
Okay. Maybe you can ask the.
I'll ask the applicant at the end.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, any further questions? If not, we will start the public testimony. Before starting the public testimony, I would like to remind each person, when you come to the podium, you must state your name. to the podium, you must state your name. Please remember to only address the commission, not the audience, or the applicant, or N/representative. You have three minutes to testify, and will be asked to stop when the time runs out. Keep questions and comments pertinent to the application. Do not duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered by previous testimony heard today. Right now, I would like to invite anyone providing testimony in support of the application.
Crystal Chanda, I will be reading some notes, and I'll provide those to you at the end if you'd like to see them. I am here representing several neighbors in our subdivision. When the majority of us bought our homes in Breezy Point subdivision, we were showed plans of the entire subdivision being single-family homes. Obviously, plans have changed, and multifamily homes are coming in around us. Given the shortage of homes in our area, we know that this is a good thing for our community as a whole. The homes will be way better than the eyesore that it is now. It's turned into a construction staging area and a junkyard. We are not opposed to the new homes, but we do have a few concerns that we feel can be addressed easily. We appreciate the additional setback along the common property lines. This will indeed help with privacy. Having a walking path will also be great. I worry that the proximity of the path in regards to the fence, the construction of the path could easily undermine existing fences. I would ask that the path be moved two to three feet away from the fence line, as not only for privacy but for ease of construction. We appreciate the, for additional privacy, we request that a single tree the city is requiring to be planted in the backyard of each townhouse be planted in the area between the fence and the path. Ideally, this would be in the middle of each lot. I imagine this will also keep our dogs from barking at walkers, and this will also be good for the current, for current neighbors and new neighbors. We have a concern regarding the trash enclosures. Everyone living in the subdivision knows that Breezy Point is a very fitting name. Of course, it's always the windiest on garbage day when our trashes are at the curb. I am hoping the trash enclosures and gates at the new community would help. This would be beneficial for existing residents as well as the new neighbors. Next, the townhomes along the property lines will be two stories high. We are hoping the trees will provide adequate privacy from second-story windows into our yards and windows, but we are worried about exterior lights. We would request that exterior lights be limited to a certain height so as not to shine into our yards and our windows. We believe limiting the lighting to 10 feet would be adequate. In closing, I would like to say that we appreciate the layout of the new homes and appreciating having the townhomes closer to our existing single-family homes. I know that the previous application was pulled by the applicant so that they could address some of these concerns, and we, and all the residents in this area appreciate this. For ease, if you would like to consider our conditions, I have them out for you. You can pass those on. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone additional who would like to provide testimony in support of the application? Then we will move on to inviting anyone who's providing testimony uncommitted to the application. We then invite applicants providing testimony opposing to the application. Okay? I would like to invite the applicant to rebuttal on the testimony that's provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Street, HLE.
Just for, do you want to also get one of these, too?
No, I have one, thank you. I appreciate it. I really appreciate Mr. Chanda's comments. It's nice to have fresh eyes. We've been looking, we've been looking at this project for over two years now trying to get it to work, and I, like I said, I really appreciate those comments. And I talked with the developer, and we are really, we're good with all those. The only things we had concerns with were the trash enclosures. We just want to make sure it's okay with sanitation department if they have the gates on them. I'm not sure if they're allowed or not. So if you can get some clarification on that, that'd be great. But as far as moving the sidewalk, planting the trees where they've asked, those are all really great things that I'm glad they pointed out. I think it'll make the subdivision and development a whole lot better and neighbor-friendly, so. And you had a question?
I had a question.
Yep.
So I'm looking at, looking at the layout and that open space, the common area that leads over to Kinghorn Road. The other common areas all have sidewalks going through them, but that doesn't. Can you, can it, could it, so that people could walk through there?
Are you talking about the open space on the southwest corner? And can I approach, and you can just kind of point it out on the map?
It's this one down here.
Oh, that open space. There is some landscaping there. I'm sure I could talk to the developer and see if he'd be willing to put a sidewalk through that area to make it more east for those, I don't think that'd be a problem. But I, I mean, I'm not sure what that landscaping is. I didn't do the landscape plan, so I apologize. I don't know a lot about it, but I'm sure we could, I could talk to him about it.
I appreciated the connectivity of the sidewalks on the other, around the other common areas, and this one kind of stuck out as not having that, and I thought, well, that's going to, you know, make it so you have to walk clear.
Yeah, that's true. They got to walk clear around, so I can, I can talk to the developer about it. I think, I think he'd be willing to put that sidewalk in for connectivity.
And then the plan here is that none of these will have any kind of fencing in the backyard off of the actual units.
Correct.
It'll be open space.
Open space. Homeowners Association is going to take care of the landscaping and stuff like that.
All of that, there's not going to be any, okay, so it'll be a nice green space, open space in the area. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I had.
Any further questions for the app? Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, I would also like to invite the staff to comment on the question with regards to trash enclosures, and whether that's a requirement or if there's any restrictions.
Merrill, go ahead and address it.
Okay, thank you.
Merrill Quill, the Public Works Development Engineer for the city of Pocatello. I apologize, I didn't get my emails read fast enough today, so yes, the sanitation or enclosures, we do allow closure, enclosures. We do have a standard for those with the doors on the front, how they lock, and the bollards in the front, so the wind catches the doors and can lock them back when they're being dumped. So there are those, those options. If we need the doors and stuff, they're also maybe just the enclosures where we've gone to front loads, too, with the six yards. They're a little different container with a more of an angled door, maybe a 30 to 45 degrees versus the flat on the three-yard. And that, so that makes a little bit of difference, keeps the lids shut, a little harder to open and so forth also. So that's, that's what we do allow.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question for Merrill, actually.
Okay.
I'm interested in staff's opinion about the additional conditions brought forth by Crystal Chanda. Have you seen them?
I did, and there's no objections to staff on those conditions that we see as far as the engineering.
Okay.
And the only one, and I understand the point, the tree between the path and the fence, just, I would be a little concerned, three-foot, depending on what tried the trees yours to, if you only put two to three feet between the fence and the pathway for the erosion and so forth, which is a great idea, to try to put the trees between those points. It gets a little crowded. We have five-foot planter strips in the front and the strips in our city code that way, and even the street trees sometimes crowd that, so different type of trees might be able to, maybe they're the taller lindens or something, but no, I don't, that's the only concern. I'd make sure that, that could be a little challenging to meet that criteria the way, the way it's set up currently, but at least.
At least.
Okay, at least two feet. The plus or minus, I forgot to take that into account.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I was thinking about that two feet away from the fence. What, what's it going to do with the two feet? I mean, is it going to...
Put the landscaping and so forth in to take care of it on that side. Gives it a buffer from the fence and stuff, keeps the water away, too. So the conditions that Crystal laid out, that would be a good criteria to have.
Seems like it'd be kind of hard to maintenance.
Depends on how you set it up.
Have a old sidewalk, make sidewalk to a foot or two foot wider. I mean, what's the, what is the space for a path?
I don't know what this pathway, if it's a five-foot or is it a six-foot path that goes around there?
So that's too close to the fence.
I wouldn't put it that close, and constructability, I highly doubt that it'd be built right on the fence line anyway. So.
Okay. I had a question, Merrill. In your development conditions, you mentioned a private water system, private sewer system.
Yes.
Can you explain that to us a little bit?
Well, yeah, this is where it's private all inside. The city, we do not put the meters on the private properties. They're out on the rightways. So that's what that will, that'll have a master meter with the association to take care of that for the water, the double checks and so forth, and for the fire. So that's why the six-inch water meters will need to have for fire flow capabilities. And then the sewer inside, too, the way it's set up and that, so we don't have our equipment in on their, in their parking lots and so forth to maintain and take care of that. Once it gets out onto the side of the road, out on Philbin and then on Kinghorn, that section would become the city's. We'll take that over for maintenance and responsibility once it gets there. That's why there's a, you'll see the manhole just inside the property there on that one common lot for the park area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for the city staff? If not, I declare this public hearing closed. Commissioner, do you want to discuss, or do you want to entertain, I would entertain a motion as well, too?
Yeah, I like it. I'm a fan. Will you entertain a motion?
Yes.
You need to say something. You're moving up here like you want to talk, Matt.
Yeah, I was just going to maybe help you along on that, as far as just the path, because Merrill's brought up some, some good points. Perhaps in your wording, if the commission so desires, is to move the path away from the fence, a minimum of three feet with a preferred five feet to meet kind of your planner type. If, we'll leave that up to, I guess, the design, because, you know, moving that, I think is possible, but especially since they're, the homeowners' association is going to be kind of taking care of that. And then to avoid, that avoids a number of things, but also if you plant more of a columnar-type tree there, that would, that would help with that. And there's a number, we have a number of trees that are columnar that are on preferred lists, approved lists with the Portman Valley trees. And so we can look at that at staff. I don't know if you want to make that as a condition.
I was going to say, do you want to put that, the columnar tree kind of style tree in this, or is that just going to be patently obvious?
Well, what it's going to avoid, what you're going to avoid is just that overhang and stuff, but, you know, that's just a suggestion. It's not, I don't know if you want to, want to get that specific, maybe, maybe just have the staff work with the developer on the trees, plantings, and what have you.
Are we mandating that a tree be put in that buffer?
Yeah, they have to, so as part of the buffer, there has to be a 20, a tree every 20 feet.
We're not mandating. I think that's the standard.
It's code.
Yeah.
And it's in, it's conditioned.
But, sorry, in the two-foot, because originally, the path was going to be put up against a fence, so obviously, there was not going to be any type of tree there. So we've, we're going to allow it to come in two feet, and they need to go back in that two feet.
Yeah, so.
Now it becomes a landscape buffer.
So the change, the change is, instead of, the path, or path obviously was up against the fence, now we're in the trees, and then the trees.
Right.
And now we're flipping them.
Yeah.
So.
So I misunderstood when we were talking about this, and I apologize if I bring it up then, but two feet is definitely not enough room for anything.
Yeah, I think a minute, I think a minimum of five, or three, five is preferred.
Yeah, I think it'd be at least five.
That's what we have for planners.
But that becomes an issue because we've gone from two feet to now we're going, I mean, that's a considerable distance that we're now pushing into these people's backyards. Are we concerned at all about that?
But it's a common area.
It's all common area.
There's no backyard.
Okay.
That's what I asked about.
There is a backyard, right? They'll have property lines, you'll have a backyard. It'll be common, there won't be fences.
Yeah, they'll have to subdivide, they'll have to subdivide it out and stuff, but it's a, they're, under their homeowners' association, they maintain all of it.
Moving the path up to the tent would be four feet right there, so that's still tons of green space.
Yeah, they're going to have plenty of area, I think. I think the only, the only issue comes with, for the developers, I see it, is depending on how, how the stormwater detention, retention area is with Brock. I think that's just going to be green space right there, so they'll be able to just move that and whatever. I think it's doable. I don't, you know, I think it's actually probably a pretty good, a pretty good idea.
I was just thinking about, you know, irrigating the two feet, just if you're going to have anything.
I agree that two feet is not, is not enough.
Yeah, not, not if there's going to be trees.
I agree with that.
So does city, or, excuse me, does staff recommend a four-foot or five-foot offset?
I, I would recommend five feet, which is typical for what we're, what we're requiring for the planter strips.
Okay.
And in that way, you're not going to have the issue with kind of the drainage and so forth, and some of the concerns I think that the neighbors would have.
Do, we've talked a little bit about specifying tree type. Is that called out in city code?
It is. We, we, I look at the plan, the planning, so I can address that. I don't think the commission needs to address that. I think that one of the, one of the issues depend, like, for instance, to give you an idea on Martin Luther King Way, where you have the rendezvous center, there is a concern when that project was being conceived and what have you, and getting everybody on board. One of the concerns that the fire department had was the type of trees that were there. They, they didn't, they were fine with the columnar. So the type of trees that you see there, or the type that I'm thinking about, they're more like, you know, just kind of go this instead of this way. And so anyways, but I think whatever is going to be with.
That'll be called out, so we don't have to say.
No, I think you're good.
Okay. Thank you. Now I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, to recommend approval of Brock Place Planned Unit Development from Kent Morris, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.140, the Pocatello Municipal Code, with the conditions of approval as well as the additional conditions as stated here. The pedestrian paths will be moved at least five feet away from the fence line. Number two, that the trees will be planted, that will be planted in the rear of each townhome, as mentioned in Item 7 of the summary and conditions on Page 8 of the staff report, be planted between the fence and the path located at the midpoint between the property lines. Number three, that there will be trash enclosures provided with gates for the dumpsters. That no, and condition number four, that no exterior lights in the backyards of the townhomes will be allowed over 10 feet in height, either on the exterior of the structure or a post. And authorize the chair, just, can the chair sign the findings effect? So the current chair to sign the findings effect. A second.
There has been motion by Hewitt and a second by Fenwick. Ace, would you call a vote, please?
Hewitt?
Yes.
Fenwick?
Yes.
Or two?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. So this special meeting has now adjourned.